Your meeting of the City Council of Folsom for May 11th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Aquino?
Here.
Chalam Charla?
Here.
Howell?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
And Kozlowski?
Here. Everybody would please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, are there any agenda updates for this evening?
Mr. Mayor, you have one agenda update this evening. Item number six is being pulled off the agenda. We continue off agenda.
Okay, fantastic. All right, then first up will be Business from the Floor. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on topics or discussion items that are not on the agenda. So do we have any requests to speak?
You do. You have two requests to speak this evening. Your first speaker will be Markey, who will be followed by Judy Alexander.
Terrific. Come on down.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I want to share with you a story about a friend of mine, Josh, who moved here from he moved here from the South after being his his community devastated by Katrina and his whole community. Had issues finding stable work and what have you. If anybody is aware, it's still not great, especially for the communities of color. When Josh moved here, he had enough to pay for rent, but in moving here and looking for he had family out here. He wanted thought that there would be more work, which there was, but he quickly found out after a few months that what you make out here doesn't really pay for housing. So Josh ended up choosing to live on the streets to save money. He was trying to improve his life. He had a child that he was trying to get custody of. He needed to pay his debts and everything with that. So he was living on the street, putting himself through school, going to electrical engineering school and would was living out here at the zoo park, near the zoo park. And one night while he was out studying in the park late, he was approached by two officers, Folsom PD, who proceeded to beat him, kicked him in the face while he was on the ground. But this was a couple of years ago when I really was not not willing to come up here and speak for on behalf of him or anyone else. But that's not the case. So that happened. His book, everything was left there. He asked them, could you take his books and stuff? But the homeless community stepped up. They all knew that he was studying to go to school, took his books and kept them for him until he got out. I took him to his court date. Folsom PD ended up dropping like there was no charges. They just said, there's no charges, go home, which I thought was very bizarre since we were down in Sacramento. You know, and he had told me, I knew that he was mildly harassed on occasion from the police and what have you, but I mean, it's discouraging. But my point is not that. He had gone like a week later back home for a family reunion. While he was gone, his camp was cleaned out by the Folsom PD and his things taken. Other homeless people had seen it. They took his books and everything as well. He tried to get his stuff. He asked once to get his stuff back. But Josh was so discouraged by a guy who's just trying to do his best, trying to get on his feet and and make something of himself. And this place is so expensive and there aren't the resources and stuff out there. He's trying to do it on his own. He ended up quitting school, like not having the money to buy the books and stuff again at school. He ended up quitting school like it like shattered his dreams, living a life of being oppressed and what have you and showing up here and feeling like this was going to be a community where maybe he could plant his feet and get his roots started. But my point is like with Josh and the police and some of y'all know I've had some issues there, but I work in the shelters. These are not people who are just overnight saying, hey, I'm choosing to be homeless. I'm going to make a bunch of bad choices and I'm going to live out here. I'm going to take drugs. I'm going to live out here. There's a lot of collective things that lead up to that point. I myself was homeless at one point for not a long period, but I was when I was when I was younger. It's a terrifying place to be in to have grown men crying because they are afraid to live on the street after the shelters are closed. And when I see that Folsom is building new luxury housing, when I see that over half a million is going to our Folsom PD, you're proposing for our next four new police officers and and body cameras, of course, which I have asked for, I want those, but I don't want new police officers. When I saw that $25,000 was proposed to assist our homeless community, I was shocked and appalled.
Can I, excuse me, can I interrupt you? I'm sorry to interrupt your flow here, but normally we give people three minutes for these sections, okay? Please do definitely complete your thought, but realize that.
Oh, I'll finish up then.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're so I am asking that we stop relying on the local churches predominantly and the goodwill of a few people as I see on Facebook and what have you, nasty comments. It is shameful that a community with this type of wealth would, I felt it insulting and a very clear message that again continually that we prioritize enforcement and what have you rather than resources that help people to live a life where we don't need as much enforcement. We need a safer community and to do that is not more enforcement, it's to make this community a safer, healthier, more affordable place for people and in resources when they're desperate and down on their luck because we're all, we're all not far from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Your next speaker will be Judy Alexander.
Good morning. Good evening, mayor and city council members. Just a couple of things here tonight. Current events happening here in Folsom. First of all, we have two very active clergy that are are moving out of town, both going to Missouri to their benefit. Pastor Ryan Hawkreeb from Mount Olive Lutheran Church and Mother Erica Eisen from Trinity Episcopal Church. And both are always seeking ways to help the marginalized and we will miss them. So I just wanted to make that apparent. The second note is about the tragedy last Friday. In the morning, a life was taken right next door here. People on the streets live in a dangerous environment. On Thursday at 5:30 PM at Lyons Park, there will be a moment of silence and of remembrance. And it would be appropriate to see members of the council as well as members of the community in attendance for a few minutes, just to say we can. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other requests to speak?
You have no further requests to speak under Business from the Floor.
Okay, final call if anybody in the room would like to address us on some topic not on the agenda. Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar, please.
Your next item this evening is the consent calendar.
I'll move consent if nobody wants to pull anything.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's call the roll.
Council members Aquino?
Yes.
Chalam Charla?
Come on, yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes. Okay, call the next item.
Your next item is public hearings. This is item number five, Resolution Number 10623, a resolution adopting the city manager's fiscal year 2122 operating and capital budgets for the City of Folsom, the Successor Agency, the Folsom Public Financing Authority and the Folsom Ranch Public Financing Authority.
Good evening, Ms. Tumani.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Stacy Tumani, Finance Director and Chief Financial Officer. Tonight is the public hearing for the fiscal year 202122 operating budget and capital improvement plan, and this is your first opportunity to adopt the budget if you wish. I'm going to start off with just a very brief recap of the slides that we had the last time. It's just a few of them this time. I will note that there are no changes to the proposed budget that you received on April 27th. And then after the budget recap here, we will address the question that you asked on the April 27th meeting regarding the cost recovery for Parks and Recreation programs. This slide here displays your general fund proposed appropriations by department. The total proposed appropriations down here are 92.5 million. That's about a $3 million increase over the 2021 budget or about 3.3%. As I mentioned at your last meeting, we have continued many of our savings strategies that were incorporated in the prior year in order to keep our expenses down. That's continuing to keep frozen positions frozen. We have those reduced temporary employee budgets. And also, we were not able to give any across the board increases to any of our departments for operation and maintenance. So that 2.3% decrease, that cut that we had last year is still in place except for very specific instances for the proposed items that I'll go over on the next slide. So for your review again is this list of the budget enhancements that are included in the preliminary budget. We have the addition of the battalion chief. We have roof repair for Fire Station 36, the Folsom Plan Area Fire Station 34 design, funding for two ambulances. We have funding for a set aside for a Type 1 fire engine so that we can hopefully fund the rest of it in the next fiscal year. We have a street sweeper purchase for the Public Works Department. We have the first year of the contract for the police body worn cameras. We have the police radio encryption upgrade. We have about $170,000 for ladder fuel reduction program. We have a building renovation for 405 Natoma Station Drive. We have funding for replacement of the City Hall boiler. We have funding for painting of the exterior of the parking garage, funding for the police cadet program, some mandated zoo upgrades, some upgrades to the community center and funding for additional homelessness support. And it is important to note that the majority of these enhancements are one-time expenses. We're not really in the position right now with our current budget situation to propose ongoing costs, so you'll note there's just a couple of those on this list.
Stacy, I have one quick question. Sorry. Number three item, isn't it the impact fee driven item, not the general fund?
That is correct.
That's correct. Okay, thank you.
Here again is a summary of revenues for the past four years and then your proposed figures for fiscal year 2122. The total revenue projection is 92.5 million, so that equals our expenditures. And if you go up to the first blue line, I think it's important to note that our projection for revenues before transfers in is 84.1 million, still pretty significantly short from our high point in 1819 at the pre-pandemic levels of 84.9 million. Here's the chart showing your unassigned fund balance by year in the blue columns. And then you have your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures displayed by this tan line. The proposed budget will end up with a projected fund balance here at the end of the year at 14.35%, so continuing to be under that council policy of 15%. This is the appropriations by fund for all of the city funds. The proposed budget includes for the general fund 92.5 million, for your enterprise funds 50 million, special revenue funds at 12.4 million, debt service funds at 11.7 million, your capital projects funds at about 12 million, internal service funds at 21.4 million, and your fiduciary funds at about 20 million for a total appropriation of 220 million. I wanted to put this slide back up in here. We presented the last meeting. This is just for a continued reminder of the importance of keeping our expenditure increases minimal so they do not exceed our projected revenue growth. The blue columns are the projected revenue growth for the next five years. And what this chart is showing is if we have expenditures that grow at about 4.5%, we exceed our revenue levels next year. If we have expenditures that grow at about 4%, we could possibly get by the next two years, but by fiscal year 25, we've exceeded our revenue growth. Only with expenditures at about 3.5% do we stay within our projected revenue growth. So that's the summary of the proposed budget and just looking forward to your next steps. Tonight, you do have your first opportunity to make a motion to adopt the budget. If you do not adopt tonight, then May 25th will be your next opportunity, and this can continue through the end of June if needed. And I also wanted to mention that at your June 8th meeting, we'll have a separate presentation and discussion of the American Rescue Plan Act funding and how you would like to spend those one-time dollars. And now we'll just switch gears a bit here and go into the detail that was requested on the Parks and Recreation programs. And so I will turn it over to Parks and Recreation Director Lorraine Pajoni to go over her slides.
Stacy, can I just ask one quick question? The the list of the one-time expenditures that was provided, that's not in any particular order of importance, is it? Or they're important for different reasons?
I kind of had them in just in dollar order, sort of summarizing them by department.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, Lorraine Pajoni, your Parks and Rec Director. Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. All right, so at your last city council meeting, you had some good discussions when we presented the unfunded park discussion about just what what are we doing with our Parks and Rec programs and what kind of revenue is coming from them? What's the cost recovery? So I'll start out first with our department budget. What we did is we took the average of the last four years. We are operating on a $13.5 million budget. We have about 11 different divisions or categories where those funds exist. The main categories are administration, community and cultural services. So within that, that's a division name, we have sports and aquatics in there. Park maintenance, trails, municipal landscape services, which handles all the landscape and lighting districts and CFDs as well as contract contract compliance for the park side zoo and facility services. So of that 13.5 million, I'll just point out a few of the key areas there. 21% of our budget does go to parks maintenance. Another larger category is that community and cultural services at about 14% and another 14% in sports. Zoo is about 12%. So those are our higher categories. What I wanted to share first is of our many divisions, some of them are highly general funded fund supported and some are programs and recreation related. So here's the ones that are have a heavy general fund contribution towards them. In facility services, we have a budget of about 1.2 million and there's about a 99% coverage there. There's a little bit of recovery on facility services. In parks maintenance, so that's management of all your parks and and your trails, we have a budget of about 2.8 million. We have a little bit of recovery on that. We have park rentals. Some of the fees go back to that and also some of the impact fees go to that. Park planning, so that's the the one person arm of our department that manages and oversees all renovations and new park planning. And then trails, of course, we get most of our trails built by grants, but we have to have staff to do that. So that is a general funded obligation as well as MLS. Because we have those combined municipal landscape services in and of itself, the MLS division is completely, it's almost like an enterprise category because the CFDs and the LNLs completely pay for the staff, used to pay completely for the staff. But in 2008, during the recession, it was decided to have that division help oversee some of the contracts in parks maintenance and in parks and trails. So some of that staff time is devoted to general fund obligations. So so there's your bigger view of the general funded areas. So little summary there of just the trails budget. And like I said, most of our money comes from grants and impact fees, park maintenance, little bit of revenue there and the MLS division, how I could describe that. This is a look at the cost recovery and I'll go into detail on each of these. But the focus here is if you look over in this area here, I'll get the pointer here. In the 1819, and this pointer is pretty light, but you'll see that the cost recovery for sports is at about 82%. In in the whole CCS division, about 71%. And in aquatics, 63%. In zoo, about 55%. So those are about where we rested. The other side of the of the picture there is COVID, so you'll see those dips there. But you'll see also from a little bit of history back there, and I'll be going into a little more detail on each of those divisions. Let's go into community and cultural services. So here is where you'll see the revenue and expense for our program. So this is where the money is made in our department. We have facility rentals, events and sponsorships, preschool, youth classes and camps, teen, the cave program, senior classes and programs, art classes and some some sales because of the the retail we have over at 48 Natoma and then our other O and M. What's included in the other O and M are utility costs and maintenance costs. What we strive to do here to show the picture is we bundled in other relevant direct costs to delivering these programs and these expenses. So in CCS, it's about a $1.9 million budget of which we bring in $1.4 million in the revenue to offset that. So we have a general general fund support of about 28%. Our biggest revenue generators are facility rentals and preschool. And then the least is our teens and seniors and our art, art-related classes. So what's key here or important here is the bar graphs are good because you can kind of see juxtaposed revenue and expenses, but you'll see that is the cost recovery. So the gray line will will tell you that there's 141% cost recovery in in events. In preschool, it's 92%. In senior programs, it's 31%. Art classes, 76%. While we have some highs and we have some lows, the cost recovery is not too bad. I will also be sharing with you here in a few minutes, there's a 2007 cost recovery policy that was adopted by the city council, which scripted out the guides for us of what kind of cost recovery, whether it be high, moderate or low for these programs. In sports, we also have a similar sized budget, 1.9 million. And of that 1.9, we offset it with about 1.6 million in revenue. Our average general fund support is about 14%. Adult sports and youth sports provide our highest revenue along with facilities rentals. So again, a similar graphic, you can see juxtaposed with the revenue and the expenses and then our cost recovery is, you know, anywhere between 66% and 116% just depending upon the program. So those are your outdoor sports for both youth and adults, youth leagues, indoor sports, facility rentals, parties and concessions, and again, other O and M, which is our utility and maintenance costs. Under aquatics, we have a $1.4 million budget and approximately $1 million is brought in on revenue for that. So we have about a 72% recovery and a 28% general fund support. Admissions for our recreational swim and facilities rentals, swim meets and swim teams brings in the highest. So on that one, similar similar description there, you'll see fairly good recovery on our concessions in our camps, rec swim, which is when the which we will be opening the rec side of our new facility on May 28th. So looking forward to that and that'll enhance our gate, our gate fee there. But swim teams, meets and rentals, that that is also, it looks like the expenses are a little bit high there. Swim teams in and of, we've combined three categories. Swim teams in and of themselves are very bring have a very high recovery rate. Interestingly, even in the midst of COVID, we didn't anticipate or we didn't know exactly what kind of revenue we would bring in. And to date, we've already brought in about $311,000 and we're expecting within the next, once the report comes in for May and June, probably a $500,000 to $600,000 revenue. Unexpected, unanticipated, but certainly worked really hard to make that happen to try to change the venue a little bit and tip the scale on aquatics revenue. Lastly, in our zoo, we have an operating budget of 1.6 billion. Our revenue that we bring in is about 827,000. This is one of our more highly supported divisions. The reason we include it in in the recreation side is because there's camps that we offer throughout the year there. We have seasonal camps in the winter time, summertime camps. In fact, we just launched our summer camp registration and there's a huge waitlist already. So they're very, our summertime camps are very popular. Zoo admissions bring in our greatest amount of revenue. You'll see that that is the one that that helps us out the most. This one, obviously with our O and M is quite large. And the reason for that is you got to keep those animals 24/7. They, whether or not we're open, you know, the care and feeding for the almost 100 animals we have are are have, it has to be done regardless of being open or closed. Lastly, I wanted to share with you that, as I mentioned, in 2007, there was a a user fee and charges policy that was adopted by city council in 2007. The cost recovery goals were provided in that document and you'll see those there, the different categories, the high, moderate and low. You'll see what our current recovery rate is there. So if you, most of them are in very much the top bracket of the range that was established, probably the ones that are, and probably not to a huge surprise, the teen services are not at the top. They're at 40% and same with our senior programs. But some are are beyond the 100% recovery as well. That concludes my presentation. If I were to sum up kind of where the where I see opportunity, I see opportunity in potential gate fee changes. That certainly could be revisited at our zoo. We've done some research recently. While we're not the, I don't think we're the least expensive zoo out there. It's also hard to find apples to apples because there's not very many zoo sanctuaries, so to speak. But in terms of size, scale and whatnot, I think there's a possibility there. I think there's a possibility in our senior programs. While the cost recovery program of 2007 kind of made a certain deference to the seniors not being able to afford it, our programs, what we're finding is many of the seniors can afford some of our programs that we probably are subsidizing a little bit too much. And then the last opportunity I see is a relook at our cost and recovery policy and analysis from 2007. It's a little bit dated, so I certainly see there's an opportunity for our Parks and Rec Commission to dig in on that and bring something back to you. And they are also looking at, given the current conversations we've had with you, already looking at how are we going to solve the problem? How big is the problem and how can we go about it? So with sponsorships and opportunities for increased advertising and so they're certainly rolling up their sleeves right now and looking at opportunities there. So that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. I guess, council, do you have questions about either the budget as it was presented to us or specifically about this breakdown of the the way that we're doing cost recovery for parks?
I just have one question. I'll start with Stacy. Just because it was mentioned in Business from the Floor, I want to confirm that this proposed budget for the coming fiscal year does not include any new positions in any department, correct?
Except for the battalion chief.
Okay, thank you.
And solid solid waste also has positions, but battalion chief is the only general fund.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification, that battalion chief is the fire department, not the police department?
Yeah, battalion chief. Fire department.
Okay. YK, any questions? I'm assuming we're going to have some public comments, so questions first and then we'll bring it back for further discussion.
No, I think.
No, I think, thank you for five-hundred-and-twenty-nine pages. It is going well so far, but you always, you know, very responsive answering our questions. Thank you so much. No questions specifically, yet.
Excellent, Rosaria.
I do have some questions about the programs that are not, that don't, that, for the program for Park and Rec, that don't, how could I put it?
Pay for themselves?
Cover them costs, correct? These numbers only provide percentage, but is it possible, and I don't know if it's too much, to look at figures?
The bar chart did have the figures. We can pull that back up if you'd like to look at that.
Can I see that?
Yeah, and then Lorraine can come back up here. But on the left-hand side of that has the dollar amount, so you can see three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for facility rentals and revenue, and then maybe about three-hundred-thousand for expense.
Okay, and if I understand this correctly, and I'll just use teen cave as an example. So teen cave right now has an expense of a little over three-hundred-thousand, correct? And we recover a little over a hundred-and-twenty-five-ish, correct? So is it, and I'll use teen cave as an example. Is it possible to, is it, I mean, is it really that maybe the cost will need to go up in order for that program to cover itself?
Yes.
Is that, that's, okay.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah, in fact, we've already started looking at that as well. In fact, pre-COVID, we started looking at that because it's super economical. It serves an amazing need in our community.
It does.
But we, you know, even if we quadrupled the price, so it's about a little over two-hundred now a year, if we doubled that, or sorry, quadrupled it, it's still like a dollar thirty an hour in terms of oversight for these kids to have mentors and opportunities for homework. So we see that, and I didn't mention that as, you know, opportunities, but that's definitely one of them.
And we have, Councilmember Rodriguez also talked about some of these programs, including like the cave program, approaching it perhaps on an income sliding scale, you know, because there are many families that benefit from the excellent cave program, but we could, for example, put in a new approach that if you could prove that you qualified, you have documentation that you qualify for some other, you know, say food stamps, or you know, something that is based on, you know, income, then you get the lower rate, but everybody else, you know, pays at the higher tier. So that could, that could increase cost recovery. It's not going to get to all of it, but it could certainly improve the situation.
That program's a partnership with the school district, right?
We provide, the partnership part is that we're on their campus.
We do everything, they're providing the room.
There's the distinction for each of the kids that qualify for free and reduced lunch that could be used potentially.
Yeah, and we just were trying to point to that because we thought we didn't want to be in the business of looking at W-2s necessarily, but if we could.
I'm saying the school district could just tell.
Exactly, just if they qualified through a program and there was documentation with the school district, we'd be set.
Yeah.
And in the event where kids may need help financial, if I understand correctly, the FAA does have the ability to come in and support those families, correct? For the underserved community.
We have the, we have various scholarships already in place, so I was thinking that might be also kind of, kind of the menu of opportunity for us to offset either, to provide scholarship opportunities, so.
Okay.
There's one other thing that, because of the weird situation that we're in, the other thing that has typically been a big supporter of the cave is the golf tournament, which we didn't have last year. I don't know if there's talk of having it this year or not, but that raised a significant amount of money for the cave.
Yep, that is definitely our biggest fundraiser, so.
And it's on?
It's on.
Okay, good.
We're planning it.
Great.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Excellent. Yeah, no, I think, thank you for this presentation. This really kind of hit the mark in terms of kind of daylighting a lot of stuff that we don't talk about real frequently. And I think if you could jump forward to the slide where you had the target ranges that the council created in days gone by. And I guess, I guess I maybe have a question for Carrie. Was there controversy at all about any of this? Because they seem eminently sensible to me. I just, at the time, was there a discussion of them being?
There were probably some minor arguments over, you know, going from moderate to high, but not significantly, you know, when we had the discussions, it was, like, I'll pick seniors as an example, because many of the seniors in town are on fixed income, and we, they, there was a way to, they know who's using more services as far as the senior programs go, so that was one of the reasons why that was going to be low. Aquatic center operations, we were trying to balance between, like, the adult swim programs where they can obviously afford it versus the programs for younger kids where they may or may not be able to afford it. And we wanted to make sure that the programs were being used appropriately. That's really what it came down to. And then the facility rentals, because we had gone in a completely different direction about the facility rentals, because there had been, like, the Rotary Club had paid, you know, a nominal amount for many, many years because, you know, they helped to get that club built, and we just decided to relook at all of it. We looked at who was getting subsidies for use of a community center, as an example. It used to be that you could get any five oh one C three, you could get a weekend night for nothing, and we changed it, so that's great. You can get a free weekend night if it's a Sunday, and you can do it once a year and not multiple times a year. So it was those sorts of things that we looked at, and we were doing this on our way into a recession. So.
Yeah, I was, I, so to my colleagues, I think if there was advice that we were going to try and provide to Lorraine or to the city manager, it might be if you see some territory here that might need adjustment, but my observation of it seems pretty sensible.
Now, it seems to me, it seems pretty reasonable, like.
Remains sensible.
The outdoor facility rentals, you know, the only, the only cost associated with that might be having to pay for lights if you're doing that at twilight, or having to go back and have staff make sure that, you know, somebody didn't rent it for a birthday party and then leave it a mess.
Right, right, right.
Those sorts of things, and especially the outdoor stuff, because that, that tends to be across the financial, you know, the W-two range. You know, it's people that want to have a birthday party for twenty-five kids, and they can't do it at their house, so they want to have it in a park.
Got it.
And they want to know that they're going to be the only people, or at least have the tables reserved for them. It's that kind of thing.
Can we go back to the page that has the one-timers, the one-time costs?
Are you talking about from the budget?
The budget itself?
The budget, oh, yeah. Oh, sorry.
That's a Stacy question.
Miss Tumani's PowerPoint.
Quick question for you, Lorraine, though. Has this presentation been given to the Parks and Rec Commission yet?
No.
Okay, but will it?
Yes, in fact, yep, I've already got it queued up on our agenda for June, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
And while Ms. Tumani pulls that up, I do want to make the point that that list is sort of the, the list she's going to pull up is that above and beyond what we're doing, you know, so I don't want to give anyone the impression this is, this is the full content of what we're doing, or that twenty-five thousand is all we're spending on homelessness, or, you know, those kind of, you know, comments.
These are new one-time expenses.
These are new one-time expenses, yeah.
And that was actually my question on the homelessness support. How would, this is part of being the newbie, how do we, how do I ask for fifty thousand from this list?
I think you just did.
Yeah.
Is this what I do, may I ask? Can I, how, can I get fifty thousand instead of twenty-five added to homelessness support? Just because I think twenty-five does not provide much, but fifty thousand will give us a little more, I think, Google room to look at, maybe.
And the next question is, where do you want to get that twenty-five thousand dollars from?
Okay.
Well, two pieces of context that can help, because I think that discussion is going to happen sooner rather than later about what you're talking about. The, this, this amount right here is over and above what we're already doing that we can identify as expenses that are homelessness support already, which are substantial. We've got expenses well in excess of eight-or-nine-hundred-thousand dollars every year that are directly attributable to managing the homeless situations here in Folsom. And on June eighth, we're going to have a discussion about the federal funds that are trying to backfill some of the lost tax revenue that we had, so there's going to be an opportunity to revisit this list and a bigger list as well. So it, if we want to make a change to this list, we have to take it from someplace.
Okay.
If we want to forestall that to the other discussion, we have the opportunity to create that list.
Okay.
So, just a suggestion. Okay.
Thank you, Stacy.
Any other questions on this right at the moment, aside from that request?
I'm good.
Okay, great. Why don't we, why don't we open this for public comment? Is there any request to speak?
You have no request to speak on this item, and you have no callers on the line for this item.
Okay. Anybody in the room care to add their voice to the discussion tonight before we take it back for some kind of council action? Come on down.
I do have concerns that some of the items that where you don't see the balanced budget, immediately we go to like, oh, you know, two hundred dollars, doubling that to four hundred dollars. If y'all have never been a single parent, two hundred dollars to four hundred dollars is huge. It is a minute amount, it is nothing for me at this time in my life. But there was a time where I literally depended on my siblings to help buy my children coats, where my children got no extra cool little snacks, where we didn't get to buy all those cool little things. You're just really trying to survive. So I would ask, please, do not start taking from programs like the teen programs, the things that are actually going to help keep our kids off the street in the future. Give them an opportunity. Please don't overtake from pre-K teens, don't take from our children, please.
Sage advice, thank you. Judy?
I hadn't expected to speak tonight, but here I am. When, I understand that there is limited resources. I also understand that the majority of the resources currently allocated that impact homelessness are law enforcement, cleanup work, in other words, managing the problem. I've had a number of people ask me how we're doing with homelessness here in Folsom, and I've been pleased to tell them that we have not seen a huge surge as other places in Eldorado, in Sacramento County have. So that's the good news. The bad news is, we haven't seen it go down either. So we're spending a lot of money to manage a population that is distinctly difficult to manage. They don't like rules, they don't like being told how to live. What this one-time homelessness support and increased double, and I know it has to come from someplace, but we've got all kinds of other special interest groups in the parks' budget, which are fine, but twenty-five thousand to maybe focus on getting people out of homelessness, to maybe focus on getting our navigator, the financial support that she needs from the city to do the job the city has contracted with her to do. These are positive things that we can invest in here in the community, and at least that's my vision. I don't see any more need for.
Do you have a suggestion for where you'd like to see that twenty-five thousand dollars come from?
Yeah, the first thing, yes. It's going to sound harsh, it's not going to be popular. We have seniors, we have zoos, we have swim teams, we have a lot of places that could perhaps, as you've been discussing, offset some of their costs by additional revenues, where they're not quite up to speed, or perhaps the registration fees or whatever are dated. They're over ten years old, and other communities may have upped those mics.
That's not the case here, our fees are not ten years old.
Okay, then if they're current, perhaps we still need to think about people that are also living right here. People that are also not being assisted perhaps in some of the ways that other members of the community might be. And I don't know that for a fact. I'm just saying, it, it looks as though we might be able to find a total of fifty thousand dollars to work in ways that help the city alleviate homelessness, not just manage it.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, any other commentary? All right, let's bring this back to the council then. We can take action, we can have further discussion, ask more questions, or provide commentary. Carrie?
I personally am happy with the budget the way that it is, particularly given that we're going to have a discussion in another three weeks, month.
Two meetings.
So four weeks from now or so, we can discuss what to do with that other federal money, that one-time money, and how we spend that. But as far as the budget goes, being reasonable with the expenses that we know that we need to do, and that we know are sustainable, I'm happy, I'm happy to move the budget.
My preference is that we wait. I would, I would like a little more time, maybe because I'm a newbie, I don't know, but I would just like a little more time, if that's possible.
Okay. YK, any thoughts, questions?
Couple of things, you know, first, I agree what Rosaria is saying. We got this in two weeks ago, five-hundred-and-twenty-nine pages. It's a great information, believe me. Now we know exactly each department, what kind of staff levels are there. I was not aware, Parks and Rec has a three administrative assistants until now. So it's good to know, it's a digestion. And the other thing is, I know we were talking directly, indirectly, how much money we are spending towards homelessness, since, you know, a couple of audience are here, you know, from the community talking about it. We are spending close to eight-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars in indirect services, and we are only directly spending about eighty thousand dollars for the renovations. Can we see, to answer Carrie's, sorry, Carrie's point, can we adjust those money from within these budget only among the homelessness, where we are spending indirect staff time to the direct thing? I'm just making a point here, rather than stealing from caves or somewhere else, or somewhere else. That's a thought, I just want to put it out there. Is there an opportunity to get that additional funding? What we all think it is directly going to go to their services, to uplift them from the state where they are.
My concern is that that money is already being spent on services, that's what the staff time is. And so if there's some sort of an assumption that fifty thousand-dollar check is going to get handed to the navigator for her to do as she sees fit, government doesn't work that way. We cannot do that. That would be illegal.
I was not proposing that, just so that you know.
No, I didn't say that you are. I think that was kind of where YK was going, that we would have a checkbook somewhere, and somebody else could oversee what was going to happen to that money. We cannot do that.
Well, that's why I'm looking at this side, you know, it's making a comment, or a recommendation, or a citation, you know, that kind of thing. Whether we are going to the navigator or not, I'm not making that point, and we do know, we need to give some upliftment to pull them out from the homelessness. That's all I'm going to make. And so for all the, you know, upper funding, whatever the eight-hundred-thousand dollars, we are trying to put that on the enforcement, to make sure our communities are safe. But is there a room? That's all I'm saying, and looking at.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Tolentzela, that, you know, just for the audience's purposes, and those who haven't received this report, and we, the staff did provide a report to the city council that shows both staff time that is dedicated to the homelessness challenge in Folsom, and that includes time by our police officers, by police sergeants, by code enforcement. It includes community development staff who've been working to secure grants that get those experiencing homeless into housing through the Home Key Grant Program. It includes fire department staff time, helping to get, you know, health care to, you know, and emergency care to those experiencing homelessness. It includes Parks and Rec maintenance staff who are helping to, you know, clean up debris associated with homeless encampments in our parks and around our facilities. So that's all listed, so, and then beyond that, we have a list of direct expenses, very specific things that we have, you know, purchased related to the homeless challenge. And I think what Councilmember Tolentzela is suggesting, if I'm understanding you correctly, I don't want to speak for you, is, you know, maybe less of that staff time, you know, and take that money and put it toward direct services. But I just want to emphasize, in doing so, that in turn reduces the number of hours that our police officers can spend on this, that our code enforcement officers can spend on this, that our Parks and Rec maintenance, you know. that our Parks and Rec maintenance, you know, it has to come from somewhere. It's a reduction in the number of hours that they're spending on a very complex challenge, you know, and serving as nobly as they can.
Yeah, I agree. It's a matter of, you know, maybe taking the organizations or nonprofits out there who are willing to serve as volunteers. I looked at one of the line item, about $25,000 under the Public Works for cleanup camps has been already put under the contracts. It's a matter of, you know, how we can, you know, see where we can get from the same sources. I'm not saying, again, you know, taking again from away, where we have already lined items can be deterred with the responsibility. Can the nonprofits can take, help us? They're already doing tremendous help this community. Those are the things. That way, it is the same bucket going to somewhere else.
Understood, yeah, and we do get a, great support from our nonprofit community and not to mention our volunteers, you know, throughout the city. It just becomes a question is, you know, can we absolutely depend on that and count on that level of support so that we can then in turn reduce the staff time and that everybody understands that, okay, the police officers are going to reduce their time, the code enforcement officers are going to, you know, the maintenance staff are going to reduce their time, whatever it is, and that in turn is going to be made up somewhere. That's just the key question. Will that happen?
Yeah, a couple of items here probably can take a look at it and see whether we can adjust, not taking from somewhere else.
Understood. And then, you know, I will reiterate what I think, you know, Councilmember Howell said, that we are returning to you with, you know, another item, how to use $15.3 million in one-time monies coming from the federal government for COVID relief. So we have a separate pot of money to discuss of one-time dollars.
Okay. Sarah, thoughts, questions?
First of all, I'm totally fine with taking another couple of weeks, bringing this back to the next meeting. With respect to that $25,000 for homelessness support, I don't think anybody would suggest that that is adequate. But I think it's important to note that it's a start. It's something. The city manager can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there has been a line item for homelessness support directly in the budget before.
That is correct.
So we're starting somewhere, and maybe next year, that's $50,000. You know, I think there are a lot of ideas being floated around right now about some possible really big impact things that could be done to, as Judy very eloquently put it, not only, not just manage the homeless situation, but to be proactive and try to move some folks out of homelessness that we could do with some of that American Rescue Plan one-time money. So I'm comfortable leaving this like it is right now, again, recognizing that it's totally inadequate. As far as the Parks and Rec, I just want to thank Lorraine. I think that was very, very helpful. I'm excited that that's going to go to the Parks and Rec Commission. Marky, you know, your comments, I totally understand, and I think certainly we don't expect that all Parks and Rec programs would pay for themselves. As I stated at the last meeting, when you look at, let's say, swim lessons, for example, and swim teams. I mean, to me, it is in our community's best interest to have children and adults who are safe around the water and comfortable around the water and know how to swim. That's just a good thing. And so if that needs to be subsidized, then I'm comfortable with that. Certainly, we want to have programs for seniors and youth, and subsidizing that to a certain extent, I'm comfortable with. But, you know, we cannot subsidize everything, and so there have to be some priorities and some value judgments. So I appreciate that that's going to go to the Parks and Rec Commission. I do think I would also like to have them look at those, at the cost recovery policy and see if we can move some of those things toward being more self-sustaining. Other than that, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, just to sum up, I also am fine with waiting two weeks to approve this. It's a complicated puzzle to both understand and assemble, so the staff has put an enormous amount of time into this already. However, two weeks is not going to break the budget time-wise. I think it, you know, the two things are not related to each other all that much, and the cost recovery that we're going to get out of parks is never going to like dramatically change the amount of revenue that we have in the city. However, if we're looking at it, right, it's, I think, probably a worthwhile challenge to see if you can reduce the subsidy of the parks programs by at least $25,000 so that, at least in theory, this could move to 50 at some point. So unrelated to each other, but it's a, you know, $25,000 seems manageable on the scale of the park revenue that we already have. It's a fractional, you know, improvement in cost recovery that could maybe dramatically help in a different area, so. All right, so we had an offer of a motion to approve. Come on down.
Is that amount of $3,500 and almost $15,000, why not reduce an amount for that? Seems to me 275, 280,000, is that for salary?
What are we looking at? What item are you talking about?
Number one.
That's for a fire battalion chief. That's their salary and benefits.
Yeah.
For a year?
Correct.
Okay, so that's an ongoing cost that we're going to have to...
These are all things that would become ongoing costs.
Right.
Okay.
No, not all of them, no.
They're not all ongoing, actually.
Not exactly, I'm sorry. That one would be...
That one certainly is. That's a salaried, you know, individual that would, I'm sure, like to remain employed.
Okay, well, with the amount of money that we have going to our police, why not pull back and on their encryption upgrade? Let them deal with the budget that they have, or just reduce it by 25,000?
The police radios must be up to standard, and that's very, it's vital.
That was actually one that I could not avoid, you know, I needed to put in because we need to make sure our radios are working correctly, and our police chief can comment on that, but it's like that cost is very much needed to be sure that our officers can effectively communicate.
Yeah, picking this list apart is probably something to do with the city manager later on. We're going to have this discussion again in two weeks, apparently.
It'll come back, yeah.
It'll come back, but getting some detail about what these actually are in practice.
It just seems shameful that we're having discussions about taking programs away that are so needed for children and stuff to help other people who are also desperately in need. So it's concerning.
Your point is well taken, but the city has a lot of responsibilities that it needs to be taken to account, so.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. There was an offer of a motion. Does that still stand? Anybody want to second the approval of this?
I made the motion. Somebody wants to second it, go right ahead. They don't, I can live for two more.
Sorry, can you repeat the motion, Carrie?
It was accepted by Dazas.
Okay, hearing no second, the motion dies for lack of support. We will bring this back in two weeks. Thank you very much to the staff and everyone. And comments from the public, very helpful for our discussion. Thank you. Okay, please call the next item.
Okay, just briefly, as announced earlier, item six has been taken off calendar, which takes us to Old Business, item number seven. This is a report on public outreach regarding the retail space in the historic district parking garage and direction to staff.
All right, good evening again, Lorraine Pajoni, you're Parks and Rec Director. So tonight, I'm going to be describing, giving you a chronology. On March 23rd, we brought to you information about the retail space and wanted direction. So here's a little brief overview of what we brought to you back in March. We have a space in a historic district about 3,700 square feet. It was built out as part of the parking garage in 2008. Very simple shell, no improvements, no restrooms, no kitchen, no storage. Most recent use was leased to the historic, Folsom Historical Society for the Museum of Wonder and Delight. The zoning is historic district, which shares the C2 zoning allowable uses. The site use guidelines, as I said, historic district and commercial, commercial too, about 257 allowable uses, and I just listed a variety of them. And of course, any use that's within the facility would have to be consistent with two Folsom Municipal Code sections, what's allowed, and then specifically what's clarified in 17.52 under historic district uses. Little bit about the revitalization, which helped clarify the types of uses that were compatible in historic district. It was a study that was commissioned to find out how we could activate and bring more business to downtown. So some of these endeavors have already taken place. But the theme was to, the idea was to establish a theme, so arts and entertainment. And specifically in that study, I thought it was interesting, too. It was clear about trying not to compete with some of the downtown Sacramento and whatnot, that we had a very unique gem here to work with. Promote the historic district and the arts and entertainment in the area, secure a cultural anchor. Again, some of those uses have already, are already present in our historic district. Encourage spaces where people can meet, and then increase events. The gaps that were identified in that retail study were the full-service restaurants, specialty foods, computer software, furniture, home furnishings, and clothing. And again, you'll know that there, some of those voids have already been met. The chronology of this particular topic, as I mentioned, March 23rd, we presented this to you with the details and received direction to public outreach. So during the tail end of March and throughout April, we created an online questionnaire for public input. We provided a specialized email that people could also email us with any comments or thoughts, and then we publicized a workshop via the website. And we also included the questionnaire as well on the website and included it in news articles, two editions of the e-news, we had an e-blass and several posts on our social media. April 15th, City Manager Anderson conducted a virtual public workshop, and there was about 50 attendees on that workshop. Some of the uses and the thoughts that emerged from the workshop were retail, and they had some good ideas about water sports or sports equipment-related furniture, bike sales, souvenir shop, market and deli, event space, restaurant, pub, venue for arts. Another interesting, this actually came from two people, trades kind of repair shop, make it a space where people could bring their household goods and have, you know, tradespeople work on them. Job center, city services or info center, and a police substation in the back of the space. Again, some more themes that emerged, some that were clearly, you know, relatively clear consensus that we received need to kind of animate and just help bring, you know, the liveliness back, you know, into the plaza. There's already quite a bit liveliness there now, but just that's a nice corner of the plaza that is underutilized. So some of the non-starters that just kind of, that folks shared was no tattoo parlors or adult-related retail and just a real solid calling for compatibility with the historic district. Other themes that emerged, and there wasn't necessarily any consensus, and then some were even contradictory to each other, was avoid office use on the first floor. There was...
Did they realize there's only one floor?
True, yeah, but I think that was...
Were they confused and they thought we were going to turn the whole space into something else?
Yeah, that's right.
Basically, just a lot of comments about, let's not put offices on ground floor. So that's what that's intended to mean.
Iconic brand, tap house, avoid bar, avoid another bar in historic district, no late hours. Try to put something in there that wasn't too parking-intensive, just to keep that parking garage available for the ebbs and flows of events. Some folks thought selling is better, some folks thought leasing was better. So again, there wasn't...
So a split decision, basically, on all topics, right there, it looks like?
So with that, what we're looking for this evening is further direction to staff. Would you like us to pursue the lease option, which we would prepare an RFP? And then it would be nice to have any sort of parameters or restrictions you'd like us to consider in that RFP. Pursue a sale, and we would have to retain a commercial appraisal company to assist with that. We've done our own research, but that is indeed a critical piece of information, which would be followed by preparation of a RFP. And again, we'd need some, it'd be helpful to have any restrictions or guidance.
Is the commercial appraisal, isn't that useful on either path?
It really would be, yeah. It really would be. I think the sale is a little bit more finite, where the lease has a little more flexibility in there with CPIs and whatnot. But, yeah, I would certainly take the lead on that and either legal or city manager direction on how you'd like to do that. And then, of course, it still remains open, because I did actually pop up on our, throughout the various venues that we received input, that city operations, some folks thought it'd be great to have another opportunity for kids, families to be able to, you know, have kind of evening daycare for their kids so the parents can go out, and that would be run by city. So city operations seem to bubble up a little bit, not as resounding as some of the other retail.
Okay, my advice, turn the turntable into a jungle gym.
And then there's that.
It's not going to get much support, okay? All right. Listen, I was the one that kind of stirred the pot, asking for this to come forward originally. My opinion has not changed. Lease it or sell it. Let's get it occupied by something that helps activate our historic district, and sooner is better than later. So I'm happy going down any of these paths. I don't particularly have any interest in putting super-specific restrictions on, other than the ones that are in our zoning ordinance, because they cover the things that some people were concerned about in terms of hours and, you know, liquor licenses and things like that. So I think, and, you know, undesirable type uses, which we wouldn't allow anyway. So that's where I am and always have been on this one, and I'm happy to seek any other commentary.
Because we don't already have tattoo parlors on Sutter Street, and we've never had an adult retail space on Sutter Street.
I do not see tattoo parlors as undesirable.
If you sat here and heard as many council meetings as I have, you'd think it was funny.
Yeah, yeah. Sarah?
Downfall of society.
Yeah.
Well, I too favor lease or sale and want something that, like you said, activates, energizes the space, something that encourages folks to linger and to congregate, and I have some particular uses in my mind. But the thing that I'm a little bit concerned about is, and I think this is the third facility that we've talked about in the last couple of meetings. I really, I don't particularly want the city to be in a property management business. So if we, you know, hired a commercial property manager or somebody that could manage this for us, I do believe if we go the lease route, it does need, we need to be making sure we're leasing at market rate because it's not fair to the surrounding merchants if we don't. But I see our friend from the Greater Folsom Partnership in the audience, and we do partner with them for economic development, so I think it would be interesting to hear from him.
Okay, got it. Just questions, and then why don't we open it for public comment, and then we can come back and discuss further?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, great. Why don't we seek our public comment? We have one blue card.
Speaker is Joe Gagliardi.
Good evening, Joe Gagliardi, Greater Folsom Partnership. So a couple of comments I had on this was, first of all, that if, I think what she shared with you was good information relative to activating the area. If you go to lease it, though, one of the questions I have, and then you have to be very clear, is, is the city planning on doing any of the tenant improvements, which would be capital outlay on behalf of the city? If you don't, then the tenant has to come up with that, and that may disqualify some people, depending on how you are approaching it. I think it'd be a lot better if you gave some clear direction on what you'd like to see, rather than just open it up. You know, if you decided that there, you know, list five or 10 things that you would like to consider and any other or something, but I wouldn't just say come one, come all, because I think you'll just get a wider range of things that will make it difficult to have you guys agree on something. I think you should have a vision of what you want and put it out there and see what you get in response, and know clearly whether you're going to pay for the tenant improvements or an allocation to do that, and that has to come from somewhere. And if not, then the tenant gets credits on their rent going forward, if you're going forward with the lease. If you're going forward with the sale, that's a whole different game. But I would just recommend that you have that all flushed out ahead of time, because that'll, that'll eliminate some people from wanting to propose that'll cause you angst. You get someone to propose and you get into negotiation, they go, I don't have any capital, then, then you're, you know, you're kind of in a bad situation. Happy to provide any input, solicit, advertise it, whatever role you would like us to do, we're happy to do it.
Personally, I think I'd like to continue the discussion, because, I mean, if you look at the capital that's required, say, say we wanted to say that we wanted to make it a restaurant. A, how do the restaurant, the rest of the restaurant owners in the Historic District feel about that? And B, the capital required to put a restaurant in that space is probably a couple hundred thousand dollars. So the only way somebody's going to agree to that is if you're going to give them a long-term lease. So, you know, that's the difference in somebody going in and, and doing tenant improvements, you know, installing a couple of bathrooms to do, you know, where they're going to sell furniture. The improvements are dramatically different with those two alternatives than they would be for a whole bunch of other things, so.
I think that reinforces Sarah's point that having a leasing agent as part of this discussion makes some sense.
I don't have a problem with having a leasing agent, but I don't see that the leasing agent is necessarily going to be the one to make those determinations. We would have to decide if we have, as Joe suggested, do we have a list of, you know, no more than 10 things that we'd like to see there? And then we have some idea of what we think the tenant improvements would cost to do that. Are we willing to say, okay, we'll give you a $50,000 credit, or we'll give you no credit? Or, you know, if you want to do a restaurant and do a significant tenant improvement, then we'll entertain a 20-year lease versus, you know, other leases that might be five-year leases.
Yeah, so I live in, I happen to, in my job, respond to a lot of requests for proposals and requests for qualifications. And they come in multiple flavors, ones that are super, super specific, where all of what Joe was suggesting is laid out and a real obvious result is, is, you know, designed into the request. And then there are others where the, you know, in this case, the tenant that would like to make use of that place proposes terms. And if that means that their, you know, their circumstance leads them to need support on tenant fit-out, that's a factor for us to consider, whoever we choose as the, as the, you know, committee to decide who ultimately wins the RFP or Q, right? So I, I'm, I'm less inclined myself to presuppose who it is out there in the world that can make good use of that space and try and narrow the field preemptively. I think that our zoning code allows certain uses in the Historic District, and those are all generally beneficial uses to the Historic District. Their retail, their restaurant, their food service, and, you know, things like that, generally speaking, right?
I feel like, I feel like you asked the community what they wanted, you should at least use that as a guideline.
Was any of those results definitive to you?
Well, I think it gave you somewhat, somebody said-
Well, one said no, no more bars and one said brew pub. One said generate no more new parking, you know, and one said, you know, it's, they were contradictory results.
There was really, there wasn't a clear consensus, I would say, you know, at the public meeting or in the, you know, the various emails received, other, you know, other than I would say, you know, not the onerous uses that you would imagine, or that somebody thinks are onerous. And, you know, I would think there was general agreement, probably don't stick an office in there, you know, a daytime office situation in there. But other than that, yeah, it was, during the public meeting, I can personally comment, you know, it was on Zoom, so people were talking and people were typing in the chat, and there was, you know, brew pub, no alcohol, brew pub, no alcohol, you know, and there were directly contradictory ideas at some points, you know, so.
Mike, can I get clarification? So what you're saying is that for the RFP to allow people to set what they are-
To offer to us. It's a request for proposals. It's not something that we have to accept, we can reject everything.
And I, I think I'm right there with you. I have a question for Joe, but I am right there with you, because when I found my location, my location was not set up for a restaurant. And the owner said, I have zero TI. And I said, that's okay, because I really want this space. And I put out the money, but then I have now a 20-year lease. So I think allowing people to make that decision, decision is, I think, beneficial, because there really isn't any TI money for this, correct?
I was not planning any TI, I was hoping to negotiate that with, you know, whoever. And it would, every, you know, it, it, the answer is, it depends, dot, dot, dot. You know, we, we need, you know, our vision was that we would put out, you know, a request for proposals and we would, you know, see what kind of package we put together, and it's ultimately your decision, and the mayor is absolutely correct, in the end, you can reject all of them if it's not meeting your needs and we start again, or we start again with more specifics, you know, but, yeah. But I, you know, I think we did hear from the community that, you know, restaurant, brew pub, store, you know, those were themes, but beyond that, nothing terribly specific.
Joe, in terms of economic development and Fed Corp., what would be the feedback that would be, that would bring, that would bring, you know, just a thriving area to the district, something that would be welcome, something that will bring people down? What, what would be the feedback?
So a couple of things that I wanted to address, a comment that Councilmember Howell said, there's no second story. The way the space is actually set up, in theory, the portion that's by Karens is like a second story, because it's elevated. So unless someone takes the full space, that space is not really good for retail if it's split, because it's, it's, you know, a second level retail is usually-
There's no access to that backend.
Has a difficult time, generally. So that would be good for office use if, if the space was split. So it is kind of like a second story, that side of the, oops, of the-
Kind of the back by Karens is where you're talking about, yeah.
So if it was split, that would make sense if you were considering split. If it's going to be something that's in the district, anything that brings people down. So one of the challenges with a main street or multiple tenants or multiple landlords in a, in a historic area is there's no regulation of hours, right? So if you go into Palladio, your lease says you shall be open seven days a week, you shall be open these hours. In the Stark District, because there's different landlords, there's no uniformity. So one of the challenges that happens in the Stark District is some are open on Monday, some aren't, some are open at night, some are not open in the morning. And so you don't have any continuity, so it's really a challenge to bring everyone together. One thing that I would say that you should absolutely do is require open hours if you want something to be vibrant and provide benefit to the community. So if you're going to have something in there, make sure in the lease it says you shall be open these hours, these days of the week, because otherwise, you know, they're going to open when they want to.
That's a fair consideration, yeah, I get it.
And so-
That or include, include that they require a, or require that they include the hours of operation, depending upon what type of business it might be.
Well, I mean, but you could end up with someone submitting, I want to put an office in there and I'll pay you $3 a square foot and I'll pick up all the TIs. Do you want that?
I don't.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, you know, financially, it might be the best deal.
Yeah, but I don't, I, I don't really think that this council is going to make the decision based on what, who's going to pay the highest rent. I have no interest in making the decision that way.
So that's why I was suggesting some kind of parameters under what you would like. You know, some kind of a vision of what you would like, because quite frankly, that could be what you end up with. That's all I'm saying.
All right, those are fair suggestions. I think it's possible we could give some advice to, you know, you know, give us, give preferential treatment to food service and retail over office and have some parameters around hours of operation so that they aren't closed.
And some that's a traffic generator, you know, you have to realize that the farmer's market's there on Saturdays, so the, and then the skating rink's there, and so-
Ideally, we want something that is unique enough that it draws people from far and wide to the Historic District, right?
Well, if you were building a mall or a retail center, you'd want an anchor, and this needs to be an anchor, an anchor tenant. You want something that essentially performs like an anchor tenant that's going to be a draw, not a secondary.
Gotcha.
Mr. Mayor, could I suggest that-
Sure.
Perhaps the most efficient way to handle this is to take the lead from the Parks and Recreation Commission and just do a subcommittee. You, one other council member of your choosing, work with city staff and the Greater Folsom Partnership, who has some expertise in this area, to figure out, you know, what we want the RFP to look like, by what criteria we're going to judge folks. It just seems like this is a very clunky way to do it if we keep bringing this back to the full council.
I'm happy to help you if you want.
I was thinking more Historic District Commission than Park and Rec Commission on this.
That's not what you suggested.
I'm just using their example, they're the only commission I know of who uses subcommittees, and I'm suggesting that we use a subcommittee.
I'm not against that, I would like to take a stab at a motion, though, myself, before we go to that, that solution. Do you have other questions or comments?
No, I think I'm more good for leasing rather than selling. I know city is growing, we need to keep our city property with city. Choose the lease option than anything else on there. I did talk to city manager about using this for city services. She doesn't see anything near time future, but as we are growing, you know, 10 years from now, we are going to be 110, 120,000. We do need those facilities for repurposing down the road, thank you.
I support leasing. I do support bringing something that will add a lot of value to the district, something that will just bring it vibrancy. You know, so, I mean, we've gone on several study missions with Fed Corp., I have two times. And, you know, there's just so many things that we, that we have seen, I think you were on one of those, where there are certain type of industries that I think can do that for our district with that location. It's a prime spot. I think if, if we put in the, if we allow the, the right business to go in, I think it could just create, it could be a game changer for our district.
Okay. On the, on this, just the question of leasing versus selling?
I'm in favor of leasing.
Okay, okay, all right. Well, let me, let me offer this as a suggestion, and then if, if this fails, we can certainly go, take it offline and do a subcommittee, an ad hoc committee to discuss this with staff. I think what I'd like to suggest is that we move forward with a request for proposals, okay? That it give preferential treatment to retail or food service businesses that can use the space in total under a lease, and that we first seek some advice from a leasing agent or from an appraiser, so that we have clarity on what the value of it is, that we seek market rates for this. And then as part of the committee that will evaluate the proposals that do come in, we incorporate a representative, perhaps Joe Galiardi from the Greater Folsom Partnership, and then staff and two members of the city council. How's that suit everybody? I, I don't want to micromanage this, I guess is what I'm getting at. I prefer that the staff take it on and I trust them to craft an RFP that can meet those criteria.
I'll second.
I'm just, in my mind right now, I'm just trying to overthink. I don't know that I want to have two council members sit on the committee that evaluates them, because we ultimately decide it. If you want to have two council members help develop the proposed lease, I have no problem with that. But ultimately, I think Greater Folsom Partnership and staff should evaluate the proposals that come back and bring us some options. And then all five council members decide, I don't want that to be-
I will accept that as a friendly amendment, is that okay with you for a second? Okay.
Is there any other entity you want included in that mix?
Maybe a representative from the Historic District, Merchants Association?
Okay, so staff, FHDA, Greater Folsom Partnership, representation? Is that what I'm hearing? Is there consensus on that?
Anyone from the Historic District Resident Association?
I fear that, not, not that there aren't thoughtful people in each of those groups and they would give something to the discussion. I fear that we will end up at cross purposes in terms of some of the stuff that we saw was inconsistent feedback. I think, I think the Greater Folsom Partnership and staff is adequate in my mind. I could be wrong.
Sounds good.
And then it comes to council to-
Then ultimately, ultimately, whatever the recommendation is from the staff will come back to us. All right, we have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino-
Yes.
Chalam Charla-
Yes.
Howell-
Yes.
Rodriguez-
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you all. Okay, please call the next item.
Okay, your next item is new business, item number eight, ordinance number 1313, an ordinance of the City of Folsom adding section 9.36.220 to the Folsom Municipal Code pertaining to host liability for fireworks ordinance violation. This will be introduction and first reading. Presenting tonight will be Fire Chief Casano.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Ken Casano, your fire chief.
Welcome.
Didn't, wasn't sure I was going to be presenting this, I didn't know if there were just going to be questions on it, but I can give a brief presentation on the, the social host liability. Really, all it is, is more of a deterrent of people using illegal fireworks in our city. It's been, you know, it seems to be growing every year. I'm sure all of you are out on the, the 3rd and the 4th, just during those holidays of July. And the sky is full of illegal aerial fireworks, you know, exploding. There are dangers with that, there are both, you know, physical dangers from people lighting them, and there are also the property damages and vegetation fires that result from these. We have them every single year. Part of the, you know, the, I guess the, the difficulty in enforcing the illegal fireworks is that, you know, you, we have enforcement officers that are out, you know, patrolling the area, being sent to different locations from the dispatch center. But the problem is, is that by the time you get there, well, they're not going off anymore. And you look across, you know, the city and you see them going off somewhere else. That's the difficulty, is that you get there, you can turn the corner, you can see one that's lit and going off in the air and exploding, but there's a group of 50 people standing there. You don't know who lit that firework. And that's where we're trying to go with the social host liability, is that if you are having a party at your house or hosting an event, a block party, that person becomes liable for the individuals that are shooting off fireworks. And it's more of a, of a deterrent to, to get that host to say, no, you're not going to light those here at my place, or you're not going to do that at my party. And that's all this social host liability really is.
Ken, when, if there is, and I just don't know this, but if somebody is having a block party, does someone have to sign that form that says we're going to block off the street? Does, does one individual have to sign it?
Yes, one individual signs it, and then I approve it.
Then I'll move it.
Okay, are there any questions for the chief? So this is equivalent to having a party at your house and serving a minor. The host is responsible in that situation, too, if they go off and, or over-serving somebody, right? Same, same general idea.
I believe so.
Very good. Sarah?
So, kind of following up on that, my understanding is our ordinance, as is written now, is difficult to enforce unless you actually, or one of our police officers, actually sees someone lighting or in possession of that illegal firework, is that correct?
Well, yes, that's correct. I mean, of course, if you catch somebody or stop somebody and they, they have illegal fireworks on their possession, that, that's, that's, you know, you can cite them for that.
Okay.
This is, this is for those that are lighting or using illegal fireworks. Typically, they're the aerial fireworks. And you may know where they're coming from, you can see the actual house they're coming from, you can see the party that's involved, but you can't necessarily pick out the specific person that lit those fireworks. So, yeah, you, you know, you can, we roll up to those- groups and we'll look around and if something is in plain view, we can seize it if it's illegal. But for the most part, they're, they're not doing that, they're, they see a vehicle come around the corner and they're running in the garage, they're hiding their stuff, and we cannot, you know, go in there and search for that stuff, so.
So I guess, maybe the city attorney can help me, because I'm a little foggy here. According to the staff report, state law generally requires that a law enforcement officer personally observe the person discharging illegal fireworks prior to issuing a citation, I get that. But how, how does the host ordinance get us around that? Now we don't have to actually see the person doing it, we just know, we just have to know that it came from that gathering and we can hold the host responsible, is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor, and member of the city council, if I may. The difference between what the state law provides is in the forms of penalty. So the state law that Madam Vice Mayor referenced is one that affords a criminal prosecution for someone who violates that state law. And the person being prosecuted has to write under the sixth amendment to confront the accuser, the, the person who's saying you're the one who violated the law, therefore you are subject to prison time. The penalty is misdemeanorous criminal prosecution. As compared to what's being proposed in this form of social host ordinance, which is not a criminal prosecution, but administrative citation where the government does not need to bear the ultimate burden of beyond a reasonable doubt. It is preponderance of the evidence, so it's 50% plus one, it's more likely than not the fireworks originated from this location. And hence the person, the responsible person being cited will be legitimately receiving a, a monetary citation with no criminal prosecution, no jail time involved.
Okay, thank, that helps, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
So.
Unless it leads to property damage, then it could be a different scenario. If there's property damage or it starts to fire.
Correct, yes ma'am.
Okay, and so it says in the staff report, and you kind of alluded to this, that it, it's difficult to know exactly which person, right? But you feel like you could enforce this host policy where when you are out driving around, you, you can tell which, which house it came from, I mean, an example, when I talked to you on the phone today, in my neighborhood of about 100 houses, on the 4th of July, there's probably at least 10 different groups of family and friends that are all lighting fireworks, you know, at the same time. And I can see, or maybe you say, yeah, we know it came from this neighborhood, but you're reasonably sure that you could know which group is the one setting it off?
Yes.
If it's aerial, yes, that's illegal.
I mean, to get, just to give you some, some background, you know, before I was a fire chief, I was arson investigator for the city. I did the enforcement with fireworks probably for the last, I don't know, seven years or more. We, when you drive around, you can absolutely tell where they're coming from, you can't do that from across the city. But you, when you're in a neighborhood, and you can, you can tell where they're coming from, from a street over. You, you just, you know the location, and by the time you drive around the block and there's only one group there, you know it came from there. And that's typically how we, you know, we, you have to get lucky to be able to actually catch somebody doing it, you have to turn the corner right as they're lighting the firework, and that very rarely happens, but it, 99% of the time, you can absolutely tell where it was originally launched.
Okay. And the other jurisdictions in California that you said have adopted this kind of host liability policy, do you know if they've seen a reduction in illegal fireworks?
So the, the entities that I've spoken to, they did see a, a, an initial, I guess, reduction in fireworks. And I think the way they did that was really through their, their messaging, through social media, and their just educational piece on it. And, and what the dangers were of fireworks, which, which we do now. But, you know, 2020 was kind of an anomaly year. I don't know if it was just because people were already at home, but there, there really wasn't a, a decrease that year. So, there's a lot of other entities that are seeking funding to be able to do this type of enforcement. But we, here in the city, you know, we get our funding through the Greater Sacramento Area Firework Task Force, and that's in conjunction with the, the firework manufacturers. They reimburse the city for all the costs that we have out for enforcement officers.
Okay. As I said to you on the phone today, I mean, I hate the illegal fireworks, I hate that they're not just on or around the 4th of July. You can be, you know, January, February, March, and, and you hear them light up, it just drives me crazy, and my dog goes crazy, which is the worst part of it all. And, and I see the need, why you're asking for this. But I just want to put it out there that I'm always hesitant to adopt an ordinance that I'm, I'm a little bit unsure on if we can enforce it. Because, you know, my family, we, we host an annual 4th of July party. And I am militant about what type of fireworks are, are allowed, where you're going to sit during the fireworks show, all that kind of stuff, because I'm a responsible host. People who aren't, I don't know that this is going to deter them, ma- maybe it will, but I don't know that it will. But I guess my question that I want to be sure from this council is, do we have the will to enforce this? When somebody comes back to us and says, hey, you're charging me a thousand dollars, I mean, do we have the will to enforce a policy like this?
In my case, all day long, if it were up to me, there would be no safe and sane fireworks either. So, I'm behind you a billion percent.
I asked the whole first, the whole first year I was on the council, I kept asking the fire department to update our emergency policies for forest fires, so, yeah, no problem.
Okay, good, I just want, I want that assurance.
I think to me, it was really more of a deterrent, that somebody will know that they're, you know, Folsom is serious about illegal fireworks, even though they may occur.
The week after the 4th of July, when somebody gets nailed and gets a thousand dollar fine for having allowed illegal fireworks at their house, you betcha people are going to think twice about it the year after.
And honestly, just if I could, just this item being on the agenda attracted a great deal of media attention, and that's to me not a bad thing, you know, already starting that, you know, education effort out there that if this, you know, if you choose to have this go through, that, you know, the council's paying attention, the city of Folsom is paying attention, the fire chief is paying attention.
Ultimately, all that we're, all that we're doing is encouraging people to be careful when they host a party, that's it.
Absolutely, I don't.
We're raising the stakes to encourage them to be responsible.
I would still move the item and I would second it if I could.
Okay, we, we, we have a, a bit of public comment to read into the record.
And our colleague over across from me. Were you going to say something like that? Yeah.
No, I'm welcoming this one.
I was just going to ask for a timeout and then you can comment, so we can do our public comments. Chief, don't leave, we might have more questions for you.
So you did have one written comment submitted for the record from Kendra Miller. She writes, my name is Kendra Miller and I am the president of the Vista Junior Eagles Football and Cheer Program here in Folsom. We participate in a yearly fundraiser with other local athletic programs to sell state-approved fireworks. This is one of our biggest fundraisers, which helps keep registration costs down. We fully support the proposed fireworks social host ordinance. And since I am unable to attend, I am asking you to count this email as a yes vote. Signed, Kendra Miller, President of the Vista Junior Eagles.
Okay, great, is there any other public comment from anybody in the audience? All right, fantastic, now, YK, I apologize for cutting you off, please proceed with your comments.
There is one more gentleman, you know, Tim O'Neil, you know, he also commented in support, you know, in putting this kind of thing. Thank you for bringing this one, at least this will give, you know, a thought for the host. Think through it, hopefully we are going to do, you know, and Christine is here listening, the way we are going to communicate so that it is more attractive and pictorial, whatever it is. We had enough, you know, household losses in this state, right? I was looking at some numbers, you know, to be more prepared. In 2018, we have 24,000 homes, even last year, about 10,000 homes were burned for fires. We don't want one more from our city for this, people has to take serious. Certainly, you know, I, I respect the Folsom residents, you know, most of them are mindful, but there is only that small percentage. There will be still challenge, people are going to come out on the road, stand in front of the two homes or three homes, or they walk around the parks, and there will be. But at least from the host perspective, at least they're going to be mindful that this weapon will give city for enforcing. I welcome this, thank you.
Thank you.
Any last comments from anybody on the council? Okay, thank you Chief Casano. So the, so the motion should be to accept the first reading, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and second?
I'll second.
Okay, great, we have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Council members Aquino.
Yes.
Chalamchela.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, your last item this evening is number nine, this is a policy for sidewalk maintenance responsibility and direction to staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Ryan Chance, I'm a senior civil engineer in the Public Works Department here in Folsom. One of the responsibilities of the Public Works Department is to ensure that sidewalks are being maintained in a safe condition for the traveling public. While we are very proud of our response times for making temporary repairs, I can't quite say the same thing for some of our permanent repairs. We have been experiencing a dramatic increase in the number of reported trip hazards and general sidewalk damage, and we are looking into solutions to help address this backlog. In preparation for this presentation, I researched policies of other local agencies in the region, and it seems that the ones that do have a policy do not have the backlogs, and the ones that don't have policies do have backlogs, it's pretty clear. That having a clear policy does help with keeping up with these, these types of hazards on the sidewalks. Public's work, public works staff has been discussing the need for a written policy for a long time, but to my knowledge, this is the first time that it's been presented to city council. I'm here tonight, I'm happy to be here tonight, I should say, to present some options and to receive direction towards creating a policy that leads to a clear understanding of sidewalk maintenance responsibility, more efficiently maintain sidewalks, and a process that better serves the residents of Folsom. So a little overview of what the presentation is going to be, it's not very long. We're going to talk about what our existing policy is, we're going to go into three possible options as, as staff sees it. And some of the components of what a sidewalk maintenance ordinance would consist of, or could consist of, rather. And then talk about the next steps based on which direction we would be given, and be happy to answer any questions following that. So, as, as it stands right now, we, the city does not have any written policy for sidewalk maintenance, we have historically, the streets department has made repairs. Like I said, we're very proud of our immediate response, we're usually out there within 24 hours making the temporary repairs, as you can see there, we either grind them or patch them with a concrete slurry mix. We do perform, yep. I'm not sure of that one, but they range anywhere from, you know, when we start getting involved when they're about a half inch differential offset up to, we've seen, you know, a few inches.
What's the last?
That one's, that one's probably three quarters of an inch to an inch.
What's, what's the limit when you can grind versus doing a more invasive repair?
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, you don't want to grind too much, right? The sidewalks are typically about three and a half inches thick, so anything over inch and a half, two inches, you don't really want to grind, you'd go with a patching option. Which is, yeah, great question, that's why we use both.
And honestly, Ryan, I'm concerned about the patching option, because unless you're using a, a rather complicated cement mixture, it's, it's, it's going to feather and come off. So my personal feeling would be, and again, I apologize because I'm jumping, as I usually do all the way to the end, I, I'd rather see you guys sock cut it and just replace it. You know, and if it means that you got to do a foot wide section to make sure that it remains stable, that's what I'd like to see you guys do.
So would I, unfortunately, it's quite more complicated and we don't, we don't perform a lot of the concrete repair, permanent replacement in-house, we subcontract that to contractors. They're a lot more efficient than our staff in, in doing so.
I don't care who does it, that's what I think you should do.
Okay, yeah, I agree, that would be, I mean, ideally, we'd like to get in there and just fix it permanently right off the bat, which is kind of where we're, I think, headed with getting some sort of ordinance amendment. So we, we currently spend about $350,000 a year on sidewalk replacements and maintenance. That can be anything from, you know, a sidewalk lift from a tree up to just, you know, years of distress in our older neighborhoods where the sidewalks were just crumbling apart from age. We are, you know, I would, I would estimate about 90% of the uplifts are caused by private property trees. It's, it's becoming just, you know, every day, more and more, the trees are getting bigger and the uplifts are getting bigger as well, so. We've had 14, roughly, sidewalk injury claims over the past 10 years, which doesn't sound like a lot, but they, they can get expensive. And we're estimating about 30 to 50 trip hazards identified annually. So, the thing is, without a written policy, the city assumes all the liability, and I'll get in, I'll get into that more about.
I disagree with that, that's not, that's not a good or accurate statement.
Okay. Okay, thank you Steve. So the challenges with the current po- current policy, unwritten policy, I'll call it, like Carrie was saying, when we, when we patch locations, if we don't get out there soon enough to make the final repairs, they'll pop off again as the roots continue to lift them.
And, and create yet another tripping hazard.
Yet another tripping hazard, and I, and I, I do call it later in my presentation, you know, another liability, increased liability, which I'm not sure if Steve will agree with, but that's my perspective. Increased liability, and that, that's just talking about how we've already been notified of a problem, we've temporarily repaired it, it's now a problem again, and in my opinion, that just makes it harder for us to defend.
There's, Ryan, in my opinion, there's a liability when you get the lift in the first place. Then there's the question of, you know, whether, how people are walking or whether they should have noticed it. And then, when somebody does trip and fall, and they call the city, and we race out there and repair it immediately, that's strike two. And then if something else happens, then you're basically strike, strike three, and we are going to be held liable.
I agree. Another issue with making these repairs, permanent repairs, are the, the trees. They've uplifted, they've lifted the sidewalk, and now we have to, we can't just replace the sidewalk, we have to trim the roots, cut roots. That, that just starts a whole nother issue of liability, if the tree was to fall over or die, I assume we would have to talk about that at that point. We do, we do consult with an arborist, but still, we don't have any agreements with property owners, just because I, I feel like we have a lack of a policy. You know, the, the whole thing's really geared towards a policy, not really placing liability.
There's, there's complexity to responsibility, I think that's the key point here, right?
Yeah, that's a good way to say it, yes, thank you. So, we, we see three options for sidewalk maintenance, we can continue as is, which I just went over. There's a current California law, Streets and Highways Code, section, section 5610, which states pretty clearly that the property owner is responsible for the sidewalk maintenance of running their property, I'll show the actual verbiage from that law here in a minute. And the third option would be to amend the city ordinance with, you know, assigning different, you know, potential property owners would be responsible for all the maintenance. And the benefit of a city ordinance, as I see it, would be, we could have all kinds of different components in it, cost sharing. I'll get into that, I'll get into that as well, but it, it seems like a good option. So option one, continue as is, we could continue to get out there, make the temporary repairs, make permanent repairs, no legal or financial responsibility to the property owners. I probably shouldn't say that next line.
Ryan, I apologize for interrupting here, but Steve, could you actually just disentangle this responsibility question a little bit? Because I think, I think continue as is does not necessarily mean that the city takes on all liability for sidewalk repairs, because there is some state law, as you. because there is some state law, as you pointed out, that kind of muddies that water a bit. Maybe we can jump directly to recommendations, because as is seems to not be working.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor and the members of the city council. And Councilmember Hal is absolutely correct, too, in terms of the legality or the legal process when, when the city does get hit with a sidewalk related lawsuit. But the, the distinction is this, most people do not see sidewalks as their own private property, when in fact, in most of the subdivisions, the property line is still in the middle of the street. The city and the public has a right of way to use the street, but the property ownership rests with the property owners on either side of the property line. So it's private property in most of the situations, and.
No, it's not, Steve, I'm, I'm going to disagree with you, the sidewalk is not private property.
That's, that's what most people think, that's what I'm saying.
I don't care what most people think, they need to look at the deed to their house.
That's right.
Their property line ends at the sidewalk.
Not true, most of the time it's in the middle of the street. And, and the city gets the right of way, and that's why you have the Streets and Highways Code, section 5610.
I know where my property line is, and it is not in the middle of my cul-de-sac.
As in most, not every case is the same, there are situations where the city actually owns the underlying street. So in most cases, property, especially in newer subdivisions, property line is in the middle of the street. It's not always the case, in some case, like I said, the city actually owns, we own the street.
They own, own the right of way, yeah.
Right, we own the property. So that's why we have the Streets and Highways Code 5610 that Ryan is talking about. So this, this, the state law imposes a duty to maintain sidewalks on private property owners, but not liability, so if someone were to trip and fall, this, people call the city, because they think the city, that's the city property, that's not their private property.
All right, so what's option two?
Can we get to the recommendations?
Sure. So here's, here's the language from the Streets and Highways Code, if you'd like to
Got it.
Spend some time reading it, or I can fast forward through it.
I think you can jump ahead.
Okay. It's, it's long, so I want to give people a chance to read it if they wanted to. But you can look it up online as well, if you're interested. So continuing on option two, which would be to reference Streets and Highways Code, which some agencies do. You know, there would be an increased financial responsibility to property owners, there would be, you know, there's a, it's pretty clearly in the, in the Streets and Highways Code that if a property owner does not repair the sidewalk as, as asked by the city, that the city can now lean the property. It's pretty black and white, cut and dry, there's no options for cost sharing or having the city do it under a known cost. So it's not, not something I feel that the city, you know, it's not in line with our, you know, way of service to our residents. And that's one of the, that's the main reason we haven't used that to date. It's kind of rough. Okay, so op, option three would be an ordinance amendment. You know, obviously, we could, the city could and probably would still go out and make the temporary repairs, because it's urgent, and I, I feel it's a, a good use of our, our services. The property owners could be responsible for the maintenance of the sidewalks, I mean, with the ordinance amendment, there's a lot of different options that we could come back with in, in terms of who's responsible for what and, and how things get done. Like Steve alluded to a minute ago, the case law requires that in order to hold property owners accountable for injuries or damages, we have to adopt an ordinance, because the Streets and Highways Code will not allow for it. So again, would allow for mutually beneficial programs to aid the property owners. So a few, a few things as I, I would envision it, the program, what we're looking for is, you know, a robust program that we can use, we can direct property owners to, there's no question, it's just, it's clear as day what the responsibilities are, how it's getting fixed, when it's going to get fixed, and potentially even how much it's going to cost. For instance, you know, I, I could see us having an on-call contract with a contractor that's, is always at the ready. They could come in when we have, you know, let's say 10, 10 spots that we, we know of for a known cost, and we'd give the, we'd give property owners the option. They can either replace it themselves, they can hire their own contractor, or they can come and have the city do it at our known cost, which in most cases would be substantially less than a homeowner would get by hiring their own contractor.
Okay, my concern about doing that is somebody's going to think, oh, I'll get my brother-in-law to do it, or I'll do it myself, they're not going to do it correctly.
Yeah.
And so I have no interest in that. I don't, I don't care if we do a cost share, but it's got to be done by a licensed contractor in accordance with our standards.
Correct, and that's going to be the case regardless, because when they, when they come in, when we notify them of it, and they're going to make the repairs, they have to get an encroachment permit, which triggers our inspection process, and we are absolutely going to make sure it's done to our standards, we're not going to allow hopscotch grid of different, you know, concrete around town, that's not our, that's not our goal here, so.
But I, but I can imagine all of the phone calls, it's like, oh, my brother-in-law did it last weekend, you guys weren't available. I'm sorry, it's already done. I, I have no interest in that, I don't even want to have that as an option.
Okay, I appreciate that, because I really don't either. I mean, ideally, I think the city providing the service is a great thing, this is what we do, is what we're good at, we have great contractors, we get great pricing. It's, I mean, it's just, it's whether or not we want to.
Even if we split the cost with them.
Pardon?
Split the cost with them.
So let's, let's actually, can I call a timeout here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get to the end of your presentation and what recommendations that you have, and then let's discuss it further, okay? We're getting off track here a bit.
So just a couple of little things, like we could have a tree, you know, tree mitigation, we'd have, the tree issue would be in the, could be in the ordinance as well. You know, some agencies have, have a deal with the homeowner, property owner, if they remove, if the property owner removes the tree, the city will come in and replace the sidewalk, it's a win-win, problem goes away. And again, inspection would comply with all city standards, so.
But the removal of all of those trees would be a major problem throughout the city of Folsom?
Well, yeah, I mean, we, there, there's another issue, I mean, because the city does require street trees in each front yard, so.
And at one point that they be within 15 feet of the sidewalk.
Yeah, I think, you know, historically, there's been some bad decisions on types of trees. I think we can start making some better decisions on less invasive trees.
But we get 24,000 houses, many of which have those trees within 15 feet of the sidewalk.
Yes. It's, yeah, it's, it's, it's an issue, for sure. This is just a quick recap, I know we're going to get through it, I, I think this covers pretty much everything I've already talked about. Next steps, I don't, I don't think we need to go over that, we're, I mean, it's, it's essentially as is, follow the streets and highways, or I will say that if, if we are directed to do an ordinance amendment, we'll come back, obviously, with all kinds of bells and whistles and things that we think would, would benefit everybody and, and be the best policy for the city. So with that, happy to have a discussion.
Sarah, any questions? This one's. Yeah. Okay, question, questions YK or Rosario, anything?
I don't have any questions right now.
Do we have any public comments? Okay, anybody in the room like to comment? All right, fantastic. Your opinion, commentary, Sarah?
I guess if I was to sum up my opinion, I would say, I think maintaining the sidewalks is a responsibility and should be the responsibility of the city of Folsom. You mentioned street trees. From what I can tell, the, the street tree, the street tree is within 12 and a half feet of the sidewalk. And in many cases, yes, it may be private trees that are uplifting those sidewalks, but the homeowners aren't necessarily the ones planting those trees. So in my case, in my, my cul-de-sac of six homes, we've lived there 17 and a half years. In the past five years, five out of the six of us have removed the trees that were placed there by the home builder, because they were way too big for the space. The tree that was in my front yard, Modesto Ash, you can't even have that in the city of Folsom anymore. Two of my neighbors had redwoods, one has, one is still there, is that liquid amber, I mean, roots everywhere. So unless we are going to get rid of the requirement to have a street tree, increase the size of the lots, I don't see how we make this an individual homeowner's responsibility.
YK, your thoughts?
Probably I may look for the experts, you know, who has done the research, and some cities have already taken some of these ordinances in our neighborhood cities here. But roots coming and lifting the sidewalks, killing the tree, is, I'm like Carrie. You know, there's already 26,000 homes out there, even though there is a few of the, you know, Sarah kind of people replaced, but large things are them. So looking for more information, you know, how other cities are doing, and our, our town is a tree city, so we don't want to lose that identity as well. And, and I, I agree, even until I read this from this agenda, I was thinking sidewalks are the city's responsibility to maintain. It was the first time, three days ago I read it and I understood, wow, I didn't know that, so.
You're not alone, nobody else knows that either.
Yeah, and, and taking this, this is where I think, you know, I'm in alignment, but we have to work hard to convince that message to people like me.
Yeah, it's going to be a tough delivery, for sure.
Right, and, and the same time, on the other side, though, you know, tripping hazards and those are certainly. And some small sect of people, they purposefully move their trees to the front, you know, after they buy it. Those are causing, those we can identify easily, but it's going to be hard on city how we can communicate this one. That's where I think I look for experts like you and Dave, to get more, you know, information for city council to make the right decision. Thank you.
So I was under the impression that the, the current state was that if, if, if something happened on the sidewalk, it was a responsibility of the homeowner. But that's just how I grew up, where in the city of San Francisco, even these trees that were planted by the city became the responsibility of the homeowner, so my parents had to, at one point, redo the front of their, of the driveway because a tree had grown over. Sarah brought up a really good point, that there are, I guess, city planted trees and then there are homeowner trees. And if the homeowner's tree has now pushed up the roots into the concrete, I, I would see that as the homeowner's responsibility to fix. In situations where these are city planted trees, I, I could see that being a challenge to, for the homeowner to be responsible for, but yeah, I don't know if they could be a two-pronged thing, where if your tree, your personal tree is impacting the sidewalk, then you're responsible, in case of the city tree, then the city would be.
No, Rosario, it's not, it's not a city tree versus a personal tree. You and I both live in custom-built houses, so the city did not require street trees at my house or your house. They did require it of the builder of Sarah's house. The city didn't plant them, they required that the builder plant them. So that's what we're talking about, anything that was built in a subdivision, chances are there's a street tree.
But we, we saw.
That the city of Folsom required be put there.
Okay, but there are some trees that are on people's personal lots that impact the concrete on the sidewalk, correct?
That's what I'm talking about.
No question, there are trees that are going to impact the sidewalk regardless of how they ended up where they, where they are. Wow. This is a complicated one.
I'd like to see something come back, and then we can discuss it when it comes back. But I'm kind of with Sarah on this, that I think it's really the city's responsibility.
I think if.
Rosario, you and I are lucky, because we don't have any sidewalks.
Well, that's what I told Elaine.
Yeah, most of our older neighborhoods don't. Yeah, I don't either.
See, there are places in Folsom, though, where people actually own the street right of way altogether, so it's the opposite situation, where everything in the street they own, so. And with, particularly with the development south of 50, because it tends to be on pretty economically tight lots, this tree sidewalk conflict is going to get worse over time. It might be, if you do bring a, you know, suggestion back to us of how to formulate something like this, that part of it actually be an incentive to do what Sarah and her neighbors did, which is remove them before they become a problem. And maybe we, you know, subsidize that in some way, so that, you know, they get to be pretty nice looking, and you take them down before they get too big, right? And trade species for more responsible species, so maybe it's more of an arborist approach rather than, you know, necessarily dumping the sidewalk responsibility on people. So just a suggestion. Do we, do we need to have a, you're, you're seeking advice, we don't need to make a motion on this, do we?
I know, if you would just want to give us direction to come back with a more of a crafted ordinance, is that what you're asking, or a?
Well, I.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
And we can debate it further once we've got something in writing.
Well, I, I mean, I, I don't know, is there general consensus that, you know, even if legally the property belongs to the homeowner, we have these, these rules that are imposed on people that say, in my, you know, in certain neighborhoods, you have to have a street tree, it's got to be within 12 and a half feet of the street. So of course there's going to be sidewalks listed, so it just seems to me that, you know, if there's consensus that, hey, this needs to continue to be the responsibility of the city of Folsom, perhaps the ordinance is more about how we work with residents to prevent the lift in the first place. The notification process, maybe they have a responsibility to notify the city when it, when it is lifted. Some sort of program for you guys, you know, like, like the Golden Gate Bridge, right? I mean, you, you routinely inspect all of the sidewalks, and when you get done, you go back and you inspect them all again. But I, I don't know, is there, I think Carrie and I are on the same page, I don't know if the rest of you feel like this needs to continue to be the responsibility of the city of Folsom.
It's the engineer and the insurance person on the same page.
Well, I, I, the way that I see it, you know, there are so many trees that I think that it's very tough for the city to oversee every tree in all the neighborhoods in Folsom. I, I think that's a challenge, and I think that the responsibility needs to be put, also put on the homeowner, the homeowner has a tree that is, where the concrete is lifting. I think by leaving it to people to say, oh, there's something, I, I don't think people will report it, or it doesn't happen.
No, they're not going to report themselves, it's going to be when the neighbor ten houses down the block trips over it and sues us.
Yeah, it, it feels to me like there's not great appetite to transfer the responsibility for maintaining the sidewalks to homeowners, even in a lit, small way, except to potentially find ways to partner with homeowners to prevent the problem in the first place. Does that seem
Fair.
Yeah, probably.
Sensible and fair, as a summation of our discussion? Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so maybe a, maybe to give staff flexibility, instead of an ordinance amendment, perhaps a proposed policy for the council to adopt through a resolution?
Then it's not enforceable with the homeowners. It's got to be an ordinance, I don't see that a policy helps this situation.
Just want to clarify your intent.
Well, I think a, a policy could give the staff some guidance on how to, you know, what to approach homeowners about and when, and things like that. So I don't think, I, I, I'm fine with a proposed, you know, a proposal. I don't know how we'll vote on it, though, because the details of it are yet to be determined, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Assistant Public Works Director, what, the, the biggest issue that we run into is the trees. And how do we approach restoring the sidewalk without damaging the tree, which isn't our property? So now we're replacing, if we want to call it our property, now we're damaging your property and potentially causing a future hazard for you and the homeowner, or the future homeowners. If we trim the, the roots to make the proper repairs, now we're setting up the possibility that tree could die on one side and lose its supporting structure and then fall into a house.
Or there's a different design for the sidewalk repair that goes over the roof.
Well, now you're talking extensive, we would raise the profile of drainage and the gutter pan and all sorts of things.
That's not what I'm talking about doing, I'm talking about doing a little bit of an archway over where the roof, where the roof is.
You can, you can do that in a lot of places, but in many cases you can't, because of the slope of the sidewalk, then you're having a sidewalk slope with a hump, and you run into ADA issues and, and those sorts of things, so we don't want to create tomorrow's problems today.
There's, there's always going to be an exception, Dave.
Yes.
But I think in most instances, much of what we've seen is something that is not a three-inch lift. You know, to be honest, the magnolia tree is wreaking havoc in my driveway up against my house. So, you know, at some point, I'm probably going to just take the. So, you know, at some point, I'm probably gonna just take the driveway out and put brick in there, and there will be some ups and downs because of this tree, because I'm not taking the tree out.
Yeah, I understand, and what I'm getting at is.
But it's not, it's not affecting my street, just so you know.
What I'm getting at is, I, I'd like to see some sort of ordinance where we could address those issues directly, so that we, we would then have some sort of powers to direct the removal of a hazardous tree if, if we can't find an engineering solution, or something along those lines, and, and not, not just say we're gonna repair this, the, and trim the roots or put in a barrier.
That's what I was trying to get at, Dave, is let's, let's, if we can, focus our attention on the thing that causes the problem.
Right.
Right? Rather than trying to transfer the problem once it's already happened, let's try and avoid it in the first place and.
Okay.
Find ways to mitigate that, you know, tree removal when it's necessary to keep it from happening again.
Just start somewhere and try to anticipate it, try to anticipate the, you know, the unanticipated result.
It's probably, I mean, I think maybe your direction is really just work on a public education program, you know, to get residents to communicate with us at key, you know, key benchmarks that we could identify.
I think you probably could send out a newsletter, hey, put a tape measure around your, your oak tree in your front yard, if it's reached fifteen inches, your sidewalk's gonna buckle in the next ten years, you know?
But they're not oak trees.
Well, whatever they are, you name it, you name it, tree.
You'll get, you'd have to get a ten thousand dollar permit to take down an oak tree, that, that's part of the problem. These are trees like, like Sarah was referring to, that the city allowed, in fact mandated, that they be planted.
I, I happen to have a oak tree in my front yard, and it's growing like crazy, so it's going to eventually pop this, it's gonna lift my house up before it lifts.
We're definitely.
While it's lifting the sidewalk up.
Much better choices are being made about trees these days than they were a couple decades ago.
It's a terrific-looking tree now, but it's humongous.
Yeah, and maybe that's, I mean, when we look at this, we have to review with Amy the, the tree ordinance, and to make sure that we have the proper trees, maybe twelve and a half feet is, is too close to the sidewalk for the street tree, maybe we need to go back to fifteen feet or something, but of course the lots are getting smaller. Making sure that, that home builders and homeowners are, are choosing the right tree, they're properly planting it, so the roots are going down and not, you know, which is tough and with Folsom's soil here, but.
We, we did, we did work with the arborists on, on those issues, specifically addressing invasive rooted, or invasive trees with roots that get to sidewalks, so they're not in the list.
Okay, good, yeah. Mine didn't go to the sidewalk, they went to my neighbor's foundation, so.
So I, I think then it's safe to say that we agree that having some kind of playbook for dealing with these situations would be useful, whether that becomes an ordinance or a policy. Please bring it back to us for discussion, okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan. The Folsom Parks and Recreation Commission is seeking public input regarding the current and possible future guidelines for naming the city's parks and facilities. We've already received three hundred surveys just in the last week. The deadline to respond is Friday, May twenty-first, and information will be compiled by the Parks and Rec Commission and reported back to the Folsom City Council at a future meeting. Let's see, Folsom Parks and Recreation Summer Day Camps are now open for registration. Programming includes zookeeper camps, vacation zone, web development and coding, robotics and game design. The camps are conducted by trained and caring staff, and you can, again, find out more on our website. It is National Police Week, a week dedicated to honoring, remembering, and supporting our police personnel nationwide. We thank the outstanding personnel, personnel of the Folsom Police Department for their service to all of us each and every day. San Luis Obispo Police Detective Luca Benedetti and Stockton Police Officer Jimmy In were both killed in the line of duty just in the last forty-eight hours, and we mourn that incomprehensible tragic loss of both of those lives, and the loss of so many police officers who donned their uniforms, left their homes to protect us, and never came home to their loved ones. All flags at city facilities are at half-staff beginning today through sundown on May fifteenth in honor of our fallen peace officers, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Council comments, Kerry?
We had an RT board meeting last night, all things are good in the RT land, as you well know. The project formerly known as the Downtown Trolley between the city of Sacramento and West Sacramento, which will be comprised of three stops, and has transformed itself into what is now gonna be an, a disconnected section of light rail, was unfortunately, in my opinion, approved by the RT board last night because of weighted voting. So if anyone thinks that project is totally ridiculous, and at a cost of a hundred million dollars a mile, I agree that it is completely ridiculous, but that's where we got left. So if you have other representatives on the RT board that you'd like to communicate with, that you think that's a really, really bad use of future operations and maintenance funding on the part of RT, feel free to do so. We will probably be naming a new chief engineer for Regional SAN, once the board makes the decision at our meeting tomorrow morning. Otherwise, including that announcement, everything is going well at Regional SAN. Financially, the Echo Water Project is nearing completion, and I'll just, I'll report tomorrow at the, at the next meeting. And I'm glad that everybody was able to attend the, the after-the-fact groundbreaking for the, the Southeast Connector Project last week.
Very good, thank you.
And just, you know, again, same warning people, yesterday, when I was going to the bank, a motorcycle and a full-size pickup truck ran the light on, at Broadstone Parkway. A motorcycle. That was the stupidest move I've seen in a really long time. So, but, and fortunately, nobody was killed, but I'm, I'm seeing it's, it's rampant all over town. There was a woman today that, that scraped a friend of mine's car, who was doing sixty-five or seventy miles an hour past Safeway going toward Iron Point. And when she hit the woman, she tried to blame the woman, said, well, my boyfriend said I'm supposed to call CHP. The woman explained that CHP doesn't actually have jurisdiction in Folsom, but I'm on my way to pick up my daughter. I, I have no idea what speed she would've driven after she picked up the daughter, but, you know, people, please just be reasonable and drive at a safe speed before you, before somebody, somebody else gets killed.
Yeah. Yellow lights are not an encouragement to speed up.
No, they're not, thank you.
So, two things, I think the mayor and I both forgot to report out on this at the, at our April twenty-third meeting, but, or at our last council meeting, but on April twenty-third, he and I went to a stakeholder meeting at Negro Bar hosted by State Parks. They've got a lot of, of the renovations done, they've got new bathrooms, pavilions, boat storage for their kayak vendor, all that sort of stuff. They are working on the interpretive signage that will explain the history of that area as far as black miners, Chinese community, the Native American community, so they are looking for feedback on that. They are considering options for a potential renaming of that park. I would say right now, the suggestions range from historic to hokey. There was no kind of, they asked people to vote, and the results, there wasn't really any sort of clear winner. I think at some point, it may be appropriate for this council to weigh in with a resolution on, on, you know, a potential rename, but I, I think it's a little premature right now. The other thing that I wanted to comment on, Rosario and I were asked to meet with a subcommittee of the River District Organizing Committee, they've been a little bit on a hiatus because of COVID, but they are still very much interested in that project and are anxious to move forward. But those discussions led to bigger discussions about economic development. And when I think about the discussions we've had here at the council lately, we've talked about a backlog of park maintenance and unfinished, unstarted parks. Tonight, we heard about a backlog of sidewalk maintenance. We also heard about some proposals that could potentially result in economic development, such as the SAN volleyball opportunity. And we've also talked about unused, underused city facilities and their potential for revenue generation. So I think kind of the two questions that perhaps we can have an in-depth council conversation in the near future is how can we proactively pursue economic development opportunities in order to generate revenue for the city? Because right now, we, we're kind of reactive, and how can we be proactive? And, and along those lines, what can we do to prepare so that when a proposal does come to us, for example, SAN volleyball, we're not caught flat-footed? We can say, you know, we've got these options, and here are the pros and the cons, and so one of the ideas that kind of came out of the meeting that Rosario and I were in was to kind of divide the city into economic development zones. And I think this could be very helpful, especially if in the future the city goes to districts and we all represent different districts, this would kind of allow us, I think, to, to still think citywide. But if we were to divide the city, let's say into five to seven different economic development zones, and we get members of the council, members of city staff, members of the Economic Development Corporation Board to sit on these kind of, you know, zone subcommittees, and maybe we identify all of the, the unused and underutilized public and private properties in those different zones. You know, inventory their, their strengths and their weaknesses. We think right now about how do we address the weakness? If we know there's a place that it needs ADA compliance or whatever, work done, then let's get that done so that when, so that we can proactively go recruit things, but also so that when something comes in our lap, it's ready to go. And so I, I didn't mention this during the budget, but going in future years, because I know things are a little, we're still recovering from COVID, but I would like to see, just like, you know, it seems like we're adding a line item for homelessness support, if we added a line item for economic development every year, and the council works with our economic development partners at the Greater Folsom Partnership to collectively figure out, okay, what, what's the priority for this year? And, and we, you know, what infrastructure needs do we have that need to be taken care of so that we can promote economic development? So anyway, just some thoughts turning around in my head, I've been putting some ideas to paper, and I'll work with Rosario on that, and we will bring something back to the council.
Okay, good suggestions, thank you. YK?
Okay, I, I'm going to reiterate what the city manager said. This week is, you know, Police Memorial Week, you know, you know, please stop by and say thank you to all our officers. The main purpose is to, you know, honor the fallen heroes and also thank the heroes walking by you. So it's my request to the Folsom residents, and thanks to the, you know, hand sanitizer distribution. I think people are naming me Hand Sanitizer City Council Member, going forward. That's good. And also, I think, off late, I, I got together with a couple of, you know, volunteers, and we started going around the parks and trying to take the see, click, fix, you know, usage, how to use it, and any amenities or things are not working, probably, Dave, I'm going to add your, you know, sidewalks, you know, trip hazard to that one for the volunteers, the more information we can collect, the better. So that's what I'm trying to do with some of the volunteers. And also, I sat with Mike on two-by-two for the school district, and Manjani Ranch Elementary School is coming up in August, September, that's, you know, great news. And, you know, our park is also, you know, going alongside the schools, and I did pose a question for some help on how our school's safety is as by September, I think a hundred percent kids are going to go back to the schools, they have been at home, and they can do whatever they want to do at home for the last eighteen months. When they come back to the school, how hard it is for them to follow the rules or guidelines. So some public safety things, probably we may have to refresh, I did request that one. And alongside, you know, Kerry, I, as an alternate, I joined Sacramento Placerville, you know, JPA, just to learn, and, you know, in case Kerry asks me, YK, can you go on that end? At least I know what it is and how, how it is. And the last one, about a few days ago, stabbing, I do know that individual, in fact, he's a chef, I was lining him, lining him up for a job. I know him, I know he's a homeless, but he's a person, and he, he wants to come out from the homeless, but he's no longer with us. But that's not our fault, but I just want, you know, mention that I was lining him for, you know, some helping chef job in one of the restaurants. But with that, you know, thank you Folsom for everything you are doing for, you know, all of us. Good evening.
Thank you, Rosario.
I just wanna let, Sarah, you're speaking my local language, so there's some great ideas there. I also wanna say that it was great to see the announcement of the Folsom Pro Rodeo, and also great to hear the return of the Historic District Hometown Parade on the twenty-sixth of June. I also wanna share a little about just some concerted effort on homelessness. The group of individuals that I've been mentioning to you, that we've been meeting the past couple of weeks, are getting together for three days at the beginning of June. Individuals from Heart of Folsom, Jake's Journey, the Folsom Police Department, Sergeant Zalaya, some engaged residents, Powerhouse and the Navigator are getting together for some collaboration, and we're going to do an A3 problem solving, which is a structured problem solving and continuous improvement approach to homelessness. And we're looking at it like a project. So we'll have a, we'll state the problem, look at current conditions, look at goals, target, do some analysis, root cause analysis, do some proposed countermeasure, which is looking at the future state plan, and then follow up. And so I'm really excited, we, I reached out to a former colleague of mine, Noel Boss, she is a Folsom resident, and she's a black belt in lean six sigma. And she told me a while back, hey, I'm looking at volunteering. So I called her up and said, hey, Marty, you know, I know that you, you said you're interested in volunteering, and I just shared with her what, what we're encountering right now. And she offered to lead the project for free, so I'm really excited that we are going to have just a, come together, have some collaboration, and hopefully in the years to come, see some transformed lives from people in homelessness.
Fantastic, okay. My, my comments will be brief. STA meets later this week and SECOG the same time next week, so I don't have a lot of, a lot to report in those areas right at the moment. We did have the SECOG Policy and Innovation Committee meeting yesterday, and the key thing that came out of that is that we are making, as a group, pretty good progress towards getting some funding for the Green Means Go program. We're hopeful that the confluence of the budget, the sort of bumper crop of state tax money and federal funding will encourage the, the governor to peel off some money so that we can make good on our clean air responsibilities that CARB gave us, which are unique in the state. So that's, that's moving along apace. The, not only is the rodeo coming, but the, there is gonna be an Oktoberfest later this year at, at Red Bus Brewing that the Chamber is part of, and there's gonna be a wine festival later this year in October that is gonna be called the Foothill Wine Festival here in Folsom. And I get to be a judge for the wine tasting this Saturday so that we can hand out awards at that event. So I get to sip and spit a lot of wine on, on Saturday, so I'm excited about that.
Did you get invited to the after of it?
I did. I am, I'm excited to actually have an actual glass of wine once I get to your restaurant, so. All right, so with that, let me reiterate, please drive safely. I've been seeing a lot of people running yellows at excessive speeds, myself, and thank you to all of the police officers that are out there protecting us day in and day out. With that, at eight fifty-nine, we are adjourned.